Everybody, thanks for attending tonight's workshop session. We're going to go to education, preparing for our February 1st board meeting. Mr. Lincoln, then you'll have the prayer and the invocation around the week from today. Appalachia High School will present the colors, we'll approve the minutes, we'll approve the agenda, we'll review some committee reports. Jordan Stevens and I will be at the clean school walks this week. Superintendent will have some recognitions, spelling bee winners, Main Street news, region player of the year, bright grant, bright ideas grant awards. We may or may not have any visitors, and I don't think we have any requests right now to appear before the board. Superintendent report, Dr. Green?
Yes, sir, I'd like to call up Dr. Pursing Lo, who will give us a counseling update.
You have council week coming up.
She's so glad you asked.
Great segue.
Good evening, everybody. Happy day tonight. I do want to update you on our school counselors, and one of the reasons is in the first week, a full week of February, that special school. So we always want to take the opportunity to grab everything that we need. And the other reason I wanted to talk with you all is because I have a question that they gave me in the past two years. What's going on with the students in that room? So maybe I thought I could answer a little bit this question. So I want to start by talking to you about transition from guidance counselors to school counselors. The profession has changed in the last couple of years. And the profession actually started about 100 years ago, so it's a relatively new profession. But really, it's been its learning and swap with 442, where our soldiers were coming back from war and they didn't have, they don't even know the service. And they didn't have a job to do. So our national councils really got their reading up when they were helping them figure out their interests and figuring out what kind of jobs they could be good at. And that's when we started doing the spelling test, the twerries, all that stuff. And then ten years later, 2050, that day happened, and that's when our regional counselors replaced him in school setting up classes. And they did this because they were trying to push students towards math and science. So they did a P P, one of the other things that I felt like. So they didn't notice the system to ever set. And they were a habit in school that had been so slow. So guidance counselors, the main job was for active Bible and mission students towards college and career readiness. Right? So they were pretty reactive, their way of teaching is to come to them. Their impact was measured via feelings perception and evidence of whole access. It was a state of tool initiative, right? They really looked at escalation. Well, back in the early 2000s, the American School Council Association put together some guidelines and standards. Because now these guidance counselors, for actual, they're also becoming mental health experts in the student system. And so that's when it changed to being a school counselor. And so Georgia, back in December, finally has adopted that. And they showed now, we're going to say guidance counselors being more, so that's a better word, better word for actually. And so we're school counselors now, and we are trying to be proactive, releasing data to figure out what has broken down for our students. I will get attendance, behavior, grades, what can we do to help our students. We actually have our students using our counselors using a new evaluation system we share called C's. And they're both actually being aligned with the score.
I'm sorry, what was that?
It's the C K E S.
Thank you.
And so now that it's just for all schools, we're going to process and there's a piece, you know, leaders are being studied. And so they're getting a lot of data to prevent it and go after them instead of preactively, you know, hires. So they work for three domains, and we're still seeing active guidance domain and the college and career readiness domain, but they also do the social and professional neutral top. And maybe we're in a tier system, but you probably have all some experience before, we talk about TSS, Montoya. And so ten counselors have been helping the students, and so we're trying to work as closely as possible to help our students. So that tier one instruction is when we're trying to see all of our students, many as possible, and maybe do a screen. And so we are going into classrooms, catering help, pushing in and making sure we connect with as many students as possible. This really happens at our elementary school level, where there's a lot of house of all those kids, and so they're really efficient, and that's when they have the most effective, so they're timed. Tier two is small break, and so they're, there are being small breaks, they might be doing collaboration with families or teachers, community members. And then our tier three is our individual competition. And so that is our individual student activity, planning, goal setting, and then also short-term. How sensitive short-term, we don't compare. That's about to make, you know, a big difference there. And then that last tier is when we're referring out, so we're referring out to the national leaders or mental health providers to do that, so they can do that. So that's really where they're spending the most of their time. Eighty percent of their time is supposed to be spent on direct students, so that's being face-to-face with students and their parents. You know, most of their time, others, maybe, they work on something, the registration, or testing, or other, they're. So these are just some examples of what they do about the same advice, more college and career readiness, trying to exhaust the place at all, but I did want to write up some of the things that they do. So they do work with new students, registration, and then we'll let, anytime we get a new student, you know, those new counselors start saying they're being tours. The counselors are sending them over to the student, maybe even a small group of other cancer students, so they can make that connection. And then we're which schedules and transcripts, and they do patchwork levels and stop skills, and this starts with, you know, their experience. So we're thinking about career county graduate profile. Right? We're wanting kids to have these motivational skills starting in elementary school, so they start starting. And so they're pushing to be an acro, to be bridge of all lessons. That's a law in Georgia where a student's 12th graders have passed specific plans to begin to them on more than career readiness. And so they do that every regular hold of six to twelve area. They're responsible for youth science, and that's an aptitude test that are speaking in most of the high school. And they're often are having formularies, also home formularies. They do events like applied ecology, helping students with college applications, letters of recommendation, paying for, they do career fairs. We do by age eight events, we promote students on attendance, credit opportunities, graduation rate. The credit fair is a fair that we do every year, for systems that colleges come and send it use, and so our students are able to help out through the information press. And they also are in charge of the enrollment and enrollment, so that's where students are getting their college benefits. So you can see they do a lot still at that academic college readiness. So shifting gears here, we're going to talk about the social and professional piece, so this is maybe where I can ask you about the mental health. Well, first, we're going to start saying, no help programs have been around before the pandemic. Right? We've been doing the issues here before the pandemic. The pandemic, does that contribute to some of that? Probably, right? A lot more stuff instead, but these are the things that our counselors do a lot. They work on self-harm, anxiety, depression, suicidal ideation, hospitalization, right? They work on behavioral issues, like the emotional outbursts, or students who are, well, meaning right now, they're fast moving. And safety, self-regulation, or maybe they're confused, they work with parents on their mental health, their survival, homelessness. I want to bring out homelessness, which is always just our families, we have a lot of students who are seven, eight, nine, or 12, who have decided to leave. And so, you know, they're finding a place to live, try to get them to. Infiltrate parents, read, you know, the resilience, the integrity skills, motivation, we'll talk about that, we're really how that's. So substance abuse, the student and parents, the high school especially, you see low parent involvement and accountability, because I guess parents, they're kids. And they even get it now, they themselves, but they really need our kind of involvement. And we have students who are typically a family member, so they're working with people. During distance learning, we were trying to locate parents who were assigned in, because they were working during the day, trying to help the parents. And of course, social media, there's destruction, all this time with that, but why are students that these are just things that our counselors work with on daily basis with our students. So, um, you may have heard recently that the American Academy of Pediatrics, you know, among other organizations, have kind of declared like a national emergency for shopping outlets. And so we're seeing from that, this is some of the snapshot that we've, the thing that we've seen here in there. Isolation, social anxiety is one. We're seeing now kids who maybe. If you're in a community, you're kind of, you know, the pandemic, they're on eight, nine grades, that I do feel you're including, my grade. I'm just saying with the little ones, maybe a secondary or two, just never had the heat back in their cafeteria before, they've been eating breakfast in their classroom. Now, all of a sudden, they're, they're in the theater, they don't eat breakfast without that social impact. And we're seeing an increase in mental health. Our catering generators have been having a whole period of, and have lost that structure. We've seen an increase in homelessness, increased loss, and greed. We've seen a decrease in motivation related to anxiety and depression, we can really see this with their attendance and rates. Food insecurity is big right now, so you have to handle three factors and three facts. We've noticed that all the normal, you know, from the west provisions for our kids, we said that we're learning these routines and procedures. And we've also seen a lot of engagement, and this could be maybe kids who didn't get those motivational skills and reading, and are interested in making work of the part. Right? So we're seeing a lot of that there, and then we're also seeing an increase in social quality, back for an afternoon. And that's important, because we want to make sure that our staff is okay, so they can use the ability. So on this next slide, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about specifically how we're seeing suicidal ideation, self-term, kind of came out there here. So this has entitled parent indications, because every time we work for the student who has attempted suicide, performed self-harm, threatened harm another person, or threatened to kill himself, we call them parents. There also have other supports in place, but this is any time a parent's been there. And so you can see back in 2017, we have schoolless sixty-five of those parent indications. An increase in 2018 to one hundred and twelve, and then they increased in, now we're out to one hundred and twenty-four. So in 2020, right before the pandemic started, we had already contacted one hundred and forty parents. I imagine it would probably get closer to seven back in the year, because it was in 2019. Last year, we had one year, year to year, we had eighty-three, which is great, but we don't know if it's going to be starting here, so maybe they don't know about, or maybe they're personally cannot be ready. But this year, we are about to one hundred and forty-nine in December. And I would say that will probably double by the end of the school year. I'm going to check, so right around the end here, we had our, since the beginning of January. So our kids are struggling, and you can see that from the amount of time we have to do five minutes. So how are our school counselors responding? Well, we're doing a lot of response services right now. So you guys are beginning, you're more of a super reactive, you're going to be a little bit of a different crowd group, but, you know, we're still being, we're still offering small breaks, whole patchwork, and it's a teacher competition. School-wide, I mean, it's actually we call that, but we're also seeing and updating our response services. So there have been a lot of tests that are mentioned since then. There's been an increase in deep practice. I'll talk to you about Apex in a minute, plus the mental health program right now, so we're referring out to them. The long-term short-term, responding, responding to the meetings, impacting student, there's a lot of, and we're just really helping the students. And so we're still doing the things that we've always done, and I want to show you all that, you know, what's going on with our kids, and there are many supports in place to make sure that they're healthy. So our Apex program, I wanted to talk a little bit about this, this is not my program, but our counselors do refer to this program. Social empowerment, we see the Apex grants this year. It is a program that is coordinated, coordinated by Dr. General with the British Army Social Worker. And this program funds our uninsured students to get therapy at the school building, by their first position, our parent, these spots. They also see many students, but we have a whole bunch of students who are being seen this year through the program. And so you can see, we already referred from all the student number, eighty-two elementary students, forty middle school students, and thirty high school students. So that's one hundred and sixty-eight students who are being seen this year by various state our schools. There is to look at. We have underinsured students who maybe their parents can't pay the copay or deductible, and so it's hard for them to see, but. Or they have students who have had insurance and they're facing very long wait lists. I put a table down there at the bottom, and here at county, we only have nineteen mental health professionals for every one hundred thousand people. Compared to the state of Georgia, who's the average of one hundred and twelve mental health professionals for every one hundred thousand people. So you can see, you know, we don't have a ton of resources here, and they're, we have really good community partnerships with all of our providers. And we work throughout all of it, so it's just possible, and to do their help with this, and to pay. But this Apex, that was in, which has been just support for our students, they do a lot more than just individual, often the new groups, they offer parent training and things like that, too. And it's been really, really great. So that is pretty much it, I just, you know, wanted to bring up our school counselors and everything they do again, and they were excited to be a member of this national school council. You know, they're not square, they know for all the things that they do, they're making an impact, and there are some just. Do you have any questions?
I have a question, but I have a comment. One of the things that I wanted to throw out there is that something that we can do to help make a difference in these numbers is remember that we can be a big advocate for the mentoring program. Because even though we aren't, we aren't counselors, and we can't obviously help fill the gap in how many counselors there are, we can be advocates for the mentor program, and spending that time one-on-one with a child every week makes a huge difference, you know, in their mental health. And so, you know, I think that we as board members and as community leaders really need to be pushing that program as much as we can. Obviously, we're in dire need, so.
Well, to that point, it's my understanding we only have nine mentors in the system right now, out of fifteen thousand kids.
Nine?
Nine. And they haven't been able to get into school, so we really lost two years, and so that's an issue. My question is, how many resources and dollars have we added to our counselors and getting them the help that they need? Or number of counselors added to deal with the increase in everything that we're seeing? I know that we've had at least two students in our county in the last eighteen months committed suicide, we've had at least seventeen in hospitals there for attempted suicides. And obviously, we just can't have that. So what, what do you need that we need to look at in terms of putting in a budget, and you can be perfectly honest?
For that question, Dr. Green, send over a budget.
Okay. Good answer.
Oh, yeah. I didn't come prepared to answer your question about how much dollars that we put specifically to deal with the.
Well, you don't have to answer tonight, because I'm sure we've got it somewhere.
So that will be something that we, you know, that we have to look at. Certainly, as you call, over the past several years, we have invested some of our top four funding that we get from federal government and support programs like in-school bases, therapeutic services, in addition to the Apex grant that Dr. Paul was talking about. We've also done the mental health conference, where we try to educate not just those that are providing the ready, helps and services, but providing support, recognizing students and the needs that they bring to, to school. So, you know, we've tried to use resources that are available to us to meet the needs of the students, whether that be academic needs, because we know that also, you know, missed learning opportunities with the times that, that we've, you know, been out of school and also visual health needs. So we've tried to take the resources and be very proactive in how we use those. So some of the ways that we use some of the money are with our graduation specialists, we've added at least one social worker to our social worker team. So we use them for mental health and academic support type of services, I don't have exact dollars for you on that specifically. How much money we put into those mental health services?
I think that's something we need to look at and possibly look at finding other funding to increase that. Because when, when, just going through this and seeing what this presentation shows us, we obviously do not have, and I hear it all the time from nonprofits in our communities, too, that we just don't have enough resources. One of the things that concerns me the most is children whose parents don't have insurance or can't afford copays. And if that keeps them from getting the help that they need, that's an issue the school system needs to address, so we need to look at that, too. And the other thing I'm concerned about is how are we tracking this? Obviously, these numbers came from somewhere, but I want to know what the tracking shows as to how we were able to help these same children that we've identified. You see what I'm saying?
I do believe that Apex, where they, when they first committed to the spring, they were covering that. Then they, you know, they're celebrating, so I believe that they're finishing how they're actually doing.
And so we get that information, so that we know, okay. And can you see that we get a report on that at some point to see how we're progressing with this? Because this, this is a huge issue. We know our children are anywhere from four to four months to two years behind, based on COVID. And, you know, it doesn't get easier for a kid when they can't be in a classroom or they're in a classroom and they can't keep up, so.
Well, I'm feeling like they're failing academically is adding to that. I've seen that, you know, firsthand, being a mom of a school-aged child myself, seeing that struggle, you know, they, you know, just, there is definitely, in the children, there's definitely a, you can see a change in them, for sure. You know, there's definitely a change in them, all of them, you know, all of them. My son doesn't, I wouldn't say he definitely doesn't struggle academically, but there's still, there's, there's a change, and it's sad, it's very sad.
I have a question, and it's kind of along the same line, but this might be better for Derek or Ms. Beggs, but how do we deal with the mental health of these counselors? Who, they're, they're wearing so many hats right now, and I'm sure there's a heavy burden placed on their shoulders because of that. What's their day-to-day?
And how do the teachers play into responding? Because I mean, counselors are obviously the most important, but the teachers are the frontliners. So how do they play in to making sure that these things are, how does it work?
So our staff, we're just seeking out the people with the, you know, walk through what is to do with the situation, and find some things of depression and how we refer to the counselor. And not to leave students if they want self-harm out of themselves, like, go, you know, the best of all, and to the master. And so they go through all of them, and our counselors, you know, they do, they do wear a lot of hats. Sure, some of them, they'll, actually, they teach sometimes, which is a lot. They try to do things that then, they can meet together, so they can meet together and talk me about it, it helps a lot. Back at our last professional meeting, we were out to, can't move away, and it's about team building and stuff, the rest of course, and all of that. So we're just trying to do things on that together, but, you know, some of them see counselors themselves. You know, they're just, they're trying to learn these skills, but, you know, you need to make your own.
We all know how many school counselors are there?
Yeah, thirty.
I mean.
Is there a way? I'm wondering if there's a way, because I know if you, if you work on the kids, a lot of the kids are bringing stuff from what's going on at home. And if you've got parents that are stressed because they can't find a job or whatever's going on in the workplace, you fix the kid, but you put them back in that same environment. You know, you've got to fix the family unit. Are we working on maybe reaching out to other entities within our county that can help? When you see a kid and they're, they're bringing that stuff home, to work on the whole family unit? Are we using those other government entities within our own county to, to say this is, this family needs these resources?
We do see a need for that, and I think Apex program this summer, still got my permission to share, I'm pointing to, sorry. For the Apex program over the summer, I did identify students and families who, the families need support as well. And so they're just working with the students, or tutoring the students, and then they were looking at parents of their new skills. So we see a need for that, which is something.
Two quick things I wanted to draw on, I think Apex is one, I think the providers such as Apex have gotten a lot more, more willing to be partners with us the past couple of years, which is great. And then also, going back to the piece about the counselors' mental health, I think what Ms. Kelly just said leads to this. We really do have to, as a system and as leadership in the system, have to be cognizant that there's, you know, the, there's a, the whole world's changed, not just schooling. And I think that's what Ms. Kelly was, was saying. So, you know, we're, it's not, we tend as educators to want to be the ones to fix everything, and I think our culture sometimes leans on schools to, to fix everything. And, you know, are, not that we need to short shrift that in any, but I think for the mental health, just of our teachers and counselors, we need to remember that, you know, we have them part of the day, and the rest of the day, they're either at home or out in the rest of the world. And I think sometimes we, we take so much of that on, that, just that self guilt that we can put on ourselves as educators is something we have to really be careful about. Of course, I'm not saying we don't do everything we can and run down every, every trail and every path to help every child. But, you know, again, you know, like Ms. Kelly said, they go home, we have them for several hours, and we do our best also, by the way, trying to teach them and give them extracurriculars, et cetera, et cetera, and, and these type of things, and then they go home and they go right back into it. So it's a, it's always been a, you know, one step forward, two step back type of process when it comes to a lot of that. And, you know, what we've been through the past two and a half years is just, just exaggerated that, and it's really brought it home. And I think that's why you're seeing, again, I think that's one of the big reasons that we're seeing teacher burnout, counselor burning out, these type of things. We really have to be cognizant of that as we, as we work on these things. One other thing I would love to tout, I've heard it several times over the years, is, you know, we don't have a public transportation system. And that, that precludes a lot of these kids and, and their parents getting to some of these places they need to be for some mental health besides school. You know, schools, the, the school system in Barrow County is the only one with a public transportation system, so to speak. I think that's, we've heard that about healthcare also over the years, that, you know, if you can't get to the ER, your health isn't going to be as good as it should be. So anyway, just a few other things to kind of throw into the, the mix of the conversation there. But it's a definitely one we talk about a lot, have a lot of, almost daily conversation, I'm sure, from, from the schools on up to the PDC.
Chris, from my vantage point, we have a counselor for, a school counselor for every four hundred and eighty-two. 482 students. This job description that y'all just shared really scares the bejeepers out of me.
Absolutely.
These folks cannot do this job. We're asking the impossible from these folks.
Yeah.
I, I, from my vantage point, we've got them spread so thin, I don't know how they get through the day.
Dr. Grant, that's, that's a great point.
Absolutely.
Is there, is there any peer or benchmark information that suggests a, a ratio, maybe I missed, a ratio of counselor to students?
Yes, and the American New School Counselor Association has that same, has that kind of assignment, which is, I will say that our budget process, we've got an allocation table, just like we allocate teachers to schools based on the goal that that school we do the same thing with counselors. And so, you know, we take that into account every year as we move through the budget process, how many students are in school and what that allocation ought to be, but, although it could be the past two winters.
Yeah, that's another piece too. Dr. Green, talking about the allocation tables, I'm not sure what they are with the counselors' piece, but I do recall from the, from the state allocations we get for counselors, I believe we're at least four, maybe more over, in other words, that we're funding totally locally already at this point. So, yeah, that, again, I'm like, I've always been, with what Mr. Bailey was saying, it's, it's a, it's a heck of a job description, and I don't know that, you know, I don't know that anyone could handle and juggle all those things well all the time, for sure. But, you know, we, we put in extra counselors at the high school level several years ago, and, and, and we've got a few extra, you know, as, as those numbers come up, as soon as they hit the number and we get the allocation and we can get, get some extra money to come in, and, you know, I hate to go down that route, but that is always part of it. Then, you know, I know that Ms. Beggs and her group, they let the principals know and they get them hired just as quick as we can. And, and another part of that is finding, finding them people to do it these days. It's, um, it's one of those jobs that just kept, kept getting more and more rolled into it over the years, and, and I'm not just, I'm at Barrow, nationwide. And the cracks really have always been there, but they're really, you know, with, with what's going on right now, they really have started to show more and more.
And with us, I would say, Dr. McMichael, with us having such a, a high percentage of contingent student population or underserved, I think that exacerbates our outcomes as well, I would imagine.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Dr. McMichael, with us being, with the American Association of Pediatrics putting us in a national emergency for mental health with children, would there be some type of allocation that we could use with some type of emergency funds to help with that, given these alarming numbers that we're seeing here?
Um, we, I, I know we've put some in with the CARES Act, but the new CARES Act, what's coming out now is much more, I guess the best word to say is structured. And so, you know, we'll have to look through what the, what the, what their guidelines are, is that money starts to become available. You know, it, it should be in there for those type of things, but then you also have to always remember that stuff when it comes to hiring people, it has to remain sustainable. And, you know, you can hire them for a year, and then we have to pay for them, you know, on there, and, and so it's, it becomes, again, you hate to say it's a balancing act, but it is. You've got so many academic needs also, and we have so many nutritional needs, and we have, you know, all these other needs too, that we, we take care of. Transportation needs, you know, the, it's just, it's a, it is a very, very multifaceted balancing act when it comes to all, all these different services, which we, all school systems, not just us, handle.
I think some things we can't afford not to do.
Well, and I think what I'm, what's kind of also implying is that us as leaders need to get with some of the other leaders and say, hey, this is all of our problem.
Yeah. Because here's a community. Well, if you've got nine mentors in this whole county, that's a problem.
Well, we need to, you know, we need to talk with the cities and the county and say, hey, look, we need to get these other government entities involved.
Yeah, and we, we have those discussions, and, and, you know, I think everyone's always ready to go, it's just, again, when it comes down to time to go, it's finding the time and finding the, the, the money and finding the volunteers. We, we are open to whatever we can do to, to get more help, and, and especially in this area.
I'm going to bring this up just because I like thinking outside the box. Is it possible with this job description and all the things that our counselors do, and seeing one of that description we can take out to say this can be done by somebody who's not a certified counselor, to work with those counselors, so that maybe we get them some administrative help to get a lot off their plates, so that they're not as stressed as they have to be, and also be more efficient in terms of dealing with all of these problems? And the other thing I would suggest is that we have a liaison with Barrow County Family Connection and all the connections that they have with services that, that they are aware of, so that we can hook up folks with where they need to be.
Absolutely, with them close. And, and I believe, I have to back and, and double check myself, but I believe, I just saw something that the state DOE is actually going through the counselors' job descriptions that they have and revamping, and so I kind of expect to see that here, not, in the not to, or it may have been the Professional Standards Commission, I'm not sure which one, but one of the two was just, there were just some emails and some bulletins I was reading through a couple of days ago, talking about that very thing. So, I look forward to see what they come up with.
Eric, do you have a question? I know that this is a presentation of school counselors, and I don't want to steal from school counselors, because at the special school counselor, we not want to look at some good work that they do. Our school social workers are primarily the link between the school system and outside agencies. They work hand-to-hand with school counselors, but in large part, when we talk about collaborative efforts in the community, as our school social workers that are involved in doing that, we have multiple connections between our school system and different service committees in the community, where we staff kids that are, have unique combinations of needs and those kinds of things, and so we do that. It was our, myself, actually, when I was a school social worker, that was involved and started a connection in, in this community, again, first president of that organization and that sort of thing, so we historically have been very connected to Barrow County and the next name. So, I think it's the school system. Our record bears out the fact that we're very involved and connected to the outside agencies in our school system and continuously trying to make sure that we're getting the best service that we can for our students, whether it be services that we provide on the inside of our school system, or whether we're connected to services on the outside of our school system. So, I think we're doing that, that second part, and we're constantly striving to do more of that and get better and support agencies that want to begin, you know, service programs and that kind of thing in, in the community as well. I feel like that we have, at least historically, been very connected in that direction.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm constantly amazed at how many of our folks in the school system are working with various agencies through family connection. I'm just saying, maybe we need to look at that again and see if we can add to it. And also, I, I guess my, my primary concern is that when looking at that job description, there's just, there's just too much on there for anybody to do well, and, and most of our folks are so good that when they can't do something well, they get discouraged, as anybody would. So, I just don't really want to look at that.
And, and I agree with you, and I certainly think that's a, that's a useful approach in job descriptions to, to grow, for example, and so I think that's certainly a positive. I feel like, Christine, if you're definitely correct me by heart, that all those things that we solve, the side pressures do, not every counselor does all of that. So, just among our counselors, these are the things that counselors are doing. So, for instance, not every one of them would be the hospital home manager for their director strength, but some counselor, and several probably, are the hospital home manager coordinators of those schools. Yes, the fifty points we're taking, that's always a, a bended one. You know, we should do, make sure that we are able to focus the energy of people and things that, that. One important comment about them is what are we doing to take care of ourselves? So, one of the things that we do in city, in support of this is that we, as part of our revenue spending, we have employee assistance program. So, we are providing folks who need those and want resources, access to the sessions outside of it, or providing, and that's, that's, that's always a good thing, how important it is to take the energy to that. Another thing that we're doing is, we're trying really hard to create what I'm going to call a culture of care within our system. We have always tried to create a family sense. We've tried to be very aggressive this year in telling people how important it is to take care of themselves, giving them resources to be able to take care of themselves. We've had a study going on in every school, in every department, on adult social learning, just to help make sure that we have opportunities to kind of talk about how we are doing and provide ourselves resources for us to be able to better take care of ourselves. And so, we really have a focus, this year especially, but even, even beginning when we were all working at home, that very first part of the pandemic was just really focusing on how to make sure that people do this, and support and take care of. We are the tools. In education, we're a people-centered business, and we don't work with wrenches and hammers and those kinds of things. What we work with is ourselves. And so, if, if a mechanic doesn't take care of his tools, he can't fix the car. If a carpenter doesn't take care of the tools, they can't fix the house. If an educator, if a school counselor doesn't take care of the tools themselves, then they can't be effective. And so, we've tried to make sure that we let everybody in our system know how important that is, try to, you know, to, to the degree that we can, provide the resources to help them be able to do that more effectively, so that they can then take care of their kids. As Dr. McMichael says, you've probably heard him say it, it's ingrained in me, you know, if they don't take care of the teacher, they'll leave the students or something. And so, we understand how important it is to take care of ourselves, and we try to ask to create a, a plan where we're both taking care of ourselves and letting them know it's important that they take care of themselves.
So, just, um, this is important, like, I think we've all sort of touched on this, ratios, it's an important thing, I think something has to be done here about ratios. I'm, I'm honored to, to have been invited and participating in the, the school council, the school counseling advisory council at Wyandotte Barrow. Went to a meeting there last week or two weeks ago? Last week. You know, it, it's, people need to, I mean, I'm not, I mean, like, all the way around, the job description, the ratios, I'm not smart enough to know what the answers there are, but it's clear that this board wants to figure out a way to help and support that in some way. One of the things that we talked about in that meeting last week, I think, and I don't have my notes up on me, was sort of a contract guidance or college counselor, or someone that has special sort of, that would come in from the outside, wouldn't necessarily be an employment. I'm probably not saying that quite right, but that seemed like something to me that could be sort of maybe a short-term fix without bringing in an employee that would take some of that work off of our counselors, is that?
Correct, yeah.
Talking about was the H and A, career and college advisors. We did briefly talk about that last year, but I think we decided to give a graduate specialist instead.
Yeah, I know we, we, it started on looking at MOU for that with, with UGA, and I'm not, not sure exactly where it landed coming the past month or so. We need to take another look, but it's, um, something we're very interested in, and it's a great way to, to go about it.
Yes, just something to take some of that, something, that's something that sounds like there is outside help for that would take the pressure off, so.
Right, and, and also our graduation coaches that we, we have been able to, to fund with CARES Act, doing a great, great job, and a lot of what they wind up doing with, especially with the juniors and seniors, is some of that college counseling piece also, and so I think hopefully that's helping out some too.
I'm the advisory council for mental health at BASSA, so I kind of got sort of to hear kind of what you did, and same thing, I left there kind of like, taking a deep breath, because you're just like, it's so, it's just so much, and you, you, you want to, you want to help, and you, you just kind of don't know where to start. But that is one thing that I thought about, is when I was in school, I remember there being like career counselors that did a lot of that sort of stuff. Is that just not really a thing anymore?
We have college and career board members at the high school level, so you do a lot of that.
I have one at Sims that worked with Sims and BASSA, I believe, would be a part.
Can they take a lot of that portion, or is it still regimented by the state as to what they're allowed to do and not allowed to do? Or can they take a lot of that responsibility off that list? I just would like to see the school counselors as able to focus on the mental health of the children, you know, as much as possible. That's what personally, you know, I would like to see, and, and just making sure that these things can be handled, because, you know, obviously, children who are not with us can't learn. So, I'm just going to say it as bluntly as I can.
All right, Christina, great job. You spurred a lot of conversations.
Thank you.
Yes, we appreciate you so much.
Ms. Persil, did you have anything for us?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Houston?
She's like, and now I come up here. Show us the money, Jennifer. Stay funny for a while until that changes. Go find a tree. All right, so, like my regular report for the invoices paid, twenty thousand, twenty four thousand, nine hundred and nine. We have medical energy solutions, paid out of lost funds, for sixteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-four cents. It was for twenty-one parking lot lights, or paying more to the school. We have Dell computers, paid out of the general fund, fourteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars, and it's for eleven ITS replacement desktop computers for our techs. We have a heat transfer system, it's the vendor name, fourteen thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars for the Westside Middle School's cooling tower replacement. And we have Apple computers, paid out of consolidated funds, seventeen thousand, six hundred and forty dollars, and this is for sixty iPads at our middle school. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Shortly.
Through our reports, photos here from the elementary school, and we'll have a couple of things, and I have to see very well, that, that photo picture there, I think that's better. That middle right edge there, you see a little, little piece of gray sticking out there, that's, that's our grab of pad for the most part. And we expect that that will begin to show up, material will begin to show up next week, as soon as next week, and hope to have the pot assembled and ready to go there in March, and we'll still be, you know, other things, furniture, things like that, but probably start giving you a regular update of the project out there. The only other thing I would really share about the elementary school, we were making good progress, I think I had, good weather lately, is that we expect to have the pad, building that, the elementary schools eventually complete in the next month and begin to put it, well, those are a couple of big milestones, maybe you can see that there in that photo. So, thank you. Rating, preparation of the location. Give a shout out to the grading contractor. A lot of times when it rains or you have that weather, you know, they, they put the feet up, say, well, rain, you can't do anything. And that's true to a certain extent, most of what you can do over a stop rain, you can get out there and you can turn that dirt over and let the sun be on it, the wind get it, and it makes it a lot better when you're trying to actually get back to work again. So, these guys are very active and they're very responsive to, to the weather issues that we have. I appreciate them. This is probably our last one on the transportation building. I see the certificate, I can see from the fire marshal, they're moving in and operating out of that building now, so. I'll let this be our last one of that.
Thank you, sir. Back to more. Ms. Banks? Okay. Don't think we have any clarification or any old business, move new business. Mr. St. Paul, it looks like you're on Zoom.
All right, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, enough. As part of our ongoing effort to maintain an updated, modern digital infrastructure in the district and to take advantage of federal funding available to us, I T S seeks to upgrade network switches and U P S units across the district in the next fiscal year. Um, due to E-rate filing deadlines, competitive purchasing must take place now. Okay, so an R F P was posted, uh, meeting not only the district purchasing guidelines, but also the E-rate, uh, guidelines that have some additional considerations. We received only one response by the deadline. Uh, that was M X N in the amount of three hundred twenty five thousand. Uh, M X N met the terms of the R F P. They've successfully done similar business with the district before, but not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. Uh, the E-rate program provides a discounted purchasing mechanism for districts based on our free and reduced lunch. COVID has kind of done a number on that. Uh, due to the years of COVID-related changes to how we gather pre-reduced lunch data, there's some uncertainty as to what our discounted rate will be. Our, our previous rate was eighty percent discount, twenty percent out of pocket for anything E-rate funded. But there's a possibility that a new assessment of our free reduced lunch count will lower our percent, increasing us to thirty percent out of it. However, most recent indications are that E-rate will use the pre-COVID discount rates, knowing that school districts have all struggled with the free and reduced lunch, uh, data gathering. Um, we won't actually know that though until they evaluate our, um, our application and tell us what they're going to give us. So this places our expected out-of-pocket amount to be between sixty five thousand and ninety eight thousand, depending on what discount rate we get. And due to this uncertainty, we're asking the board to approve this purchase based on the worst-case scenario, lower discount rate of ninety eight thousand out of pocket. But we expect to be approved at the higher discount rate. Uh, after board approval, we will submit our request to E-rate with a funding decision expected sometime between July and December. Lately, they've been pretty good about getting it in the first three months of the fiscal year. I have seen these decisions get delayed until January in the past, however. So aside from the discount percentage, we will be assigned. Uh, funding levels can vary for a variety of factors. The amount of money that they have in the program, once they assess all the applications and any ineligible items on our request. We don't believe we have any ineligible items, but part of their review process is they'll make that determination. And so our maximum out-of-pocket may be more than expected. Should we be approved by E-rate at a higher out-of-pocket than the ninety eight thousand we're asking you to approve? We will bring this back to the board for follow-up approval before purchasing. Of course, if we get what we expect, we'll just proceed, uh, without bringing it back to the board. So the financial impact is, uh, as you see below, total cost is three hundred twenty five thousand and expected E-rate portion is going to be between two hundred twenty eight thousand and two hundred sixty thousand. And our maximum out-of-pocket should be no more than the ninety seven thousand seven forty four ninety six. So the superintendent recommends awarding the contract for network switches and U P S units to M X N Corporation of Woodstock, Georgia in the E-rate funded pre-discount amount of three hundred twenty five thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars fifty four cents with a maximum out-of-pocket to the district of ninety seven thousand seven hundred forty four dollars.
It's time of the essence, John. Would you like us to vote on this tonight or is it next week? Okay.
It is absolutely not of the essence. With our current E-rate consultant, she cracks the whip and we are early in the process. So we have plenty of time to let the board consider this and bring it to the next board meeting.
John, is there a reason there was only one response to the R F P?
I was anticipating that question. Uh, I can give you specific. Um, I have a couple of thoughts on the matter. Uh, over the last few years, we've seen increasingly that the first vendor or a favorite vendor in the region who has a relationship with a, with a manufacturer gets favorite pricing that other competitors just don't get. So there's that possibility. E-rate also adds some considerations. You have to be qualified by E-rate to participate in the program. So that eliminates some vendors. Uh, you know, typically we'll, we'll, uh, a response from somebody in California who we've never heard um, buying something off of the back of a truck as far as we can tell. Uh, those kind of responses tend not to, not to come through on an E-rate bid because there's extra qualification. Um, and I suspect a number, uh, supplies, particularly in the switches uh, and the, uh, and related areas for networking suffering from supply chain issues. And so we're looking at six-month lead times. And I suspect the bigger vendors, which M X N is one of them, are just squeezing out the little guy. So those are all the thoughts I had is why we didn't get more responses. I was caught off guard. Last time we did this, we got three responses.
Right, okay.
M X N is a great company though, lots of business with them, so.
Yeah, this is Ricky. Didn't we, uh, last time do a sort of a shot in the dark on what our financial responsibilities were going to be with this? Also, this is not the first time this sixty five ninety eight came up.
No, I, I, I've done this, this is probably the third time I've brought this to you in this fashion where I give you the worst-case scenario and promise to bring it back to the board if I don't get the results I expect. And we tried to bring it back once.
Is that agenda?
Yes.
You up again on the cabling?
Okay, this is also E-rate funding. During summer renovations at Yargo, Kennedy and Bramble, uh, I T S will be upgrading data cabling in parts of the building. Um, all of them will be doing the two-story addition. And then, uh, at Kennedy, we'll be doing additional work in the rest of the building. And additionally, data cabling will be needed in the new elementary school being constructed. We're seeking use of E-rate funds to offset the cost and if awarded, we'll save up to seventy to eighty percent of the costs. However, regardless of if we receive funding or not for these projects, we will need to move forward. So we are presenting this to the board for approval at full costs. Our expectation is we will receive some or all of the discount we are requesting, but it is likely we will not receive a funding commitment from E-rate until after the renovation work has already been completed this summer. Uh, in which case what they do is they give you a rebate check for anything they agreed to fund, um, based on what you've already spent. And because we are requesting E-rate funds, in addition to following regular board purchasing guidelines, we also follow E-rate purchasing guidelines. And one of the additional factors is they have some pretty stringent, uh, criteria for how you consider and choose your, your response. And so the response therefore is a form of a weighted scoring matrix that we show below. In addition, rather than doing four R F Ps at the advice of our E-rate consultant, who just knocked socks off, by the way, um, we issued one single R F P covering all four cabling jobs. And we received three responses to our bid. Tech optics and Power Link are, uh, out of Winder. The A I O S group is out of Macon. You'll see we've broken the stuff a little, a variety of ways. The cost of E-rate eligible products and services is listed. The cost of E-rate ineligible products and services is listed. And what that is, is that in addition to cabling for classrooms, we also are putting data cabling in cameras. Security camera data cabling is not E-rate eligible. So even though we're going to have one vendor do it all, that portion of the cable is not eligible for discounted funding. Uh, you see, it's a fairly small portion of, of the whole, and then we list it. And then when you consider a response, cost has to be the highest weighted metric, but you also can consider other metrics. And those other metrics can all outweigh the single metric of a cost. Basically, if you choose not to go with, or you have to justify why. In this case, we are recommending the low bidder. Uh, the low bid response, uh, and the highest weighted score, both were Tech Optics of Winder, Georgia. So fairly close response between them and Power Link. Um, for each school's data cabling job, a portion is not E-rate eligible as shown. So we'll pay a hundred percent of those costs, so it is eligible for the discount. We have sufficiently budgeted for all four data cabling, cabling jobs at a hundred percent of the cost. We are not dependent on E-rate discounts to fit in the budget. Anything we get back is bonus, uh, that Ms. Houston will get to redistribute as she sees fit. The financial impact is two hundred seventy nine thousand seven hundred fourteen thirteen cents from the separate splashed I T construction budgets you see below. And we are requesting, of course, E-rate funding seventy to eighty percent, which we expect to hear between July and December of twenty twenty two. The superintendent recommends awarding the contract for data cabling for Yargo, Bramble and Kennedy renovations and new data cabling for the new elementary school to low bid respondent Tech Optics of Winder, Georgia in the amount of two hundred seventy nine thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars thirteen cents.
Questions, consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right, appreciate it.
Good job.
The amount of work and paperwork that went into that, um, I earned my pay that day. Thank you.
E-rate.
Back to more.
Good evening. I am bringing policy I H E to your attention. And then September of twenty twenty, our state school superintendent allowed charter and strategic waiver school systems to waive their promotion retention requirements so that Georgia milestones did not have to be factored into that decision as we made those decisions to promote or retaining students. In March of twenty twenty one, this Board of Education, uh, approved a waiver, a waiver so that that decision, uh, could remain in effect for the year twenty twenty one. So I am, uh, on behalf of the superintendent, tonight requesting that we waive promotion retention consequences at Georgia Milestone again for the year twenty twenty two. Uh, previously under the direction of the Georgia Department of Education, school districts with flexibility contracts, charter systems and school, and strategic waivers to school systems could receive input from teachers, parents, placement committees, class performance and other form of tools needed to make that determination to promote or retain students. Therefore, the superintendent is requesting or recommending a temporary waiver of policy I H E for promotion and retention through July, through July thirty first, twenty twenty two, so that Georgia Milestones is not tied to promotion retention decisions in Grace through five.
Is there a reason we can't just not make this temporary and just make it permanent? That's on the consent agenda.
Our promotion retention policy does, uh, policy statement, so we do review this annually. Considering where we are also standing, if we're taking into accountability those, the impact that that has had on interruptions to student learning. So, uh, even though, uh, we've been in this for a couple of years now, it's still impacting students. Because we have students who are being quarantined and there are still interruptions to learning. But we do bring it forward on a mechanical basis.
Well, the Georgia.
But I disagree with these.
How did we, how did we handle the, the milestones affecting the high school grades at such a high, at such a high price with what twenty, like twenty percent of their grade? I mean, that, that can, that can totally pass or fail a child, I believe. So even though we're making this waiver, if we're not allowing that to be a lower weight, in essence, we're still holding high school children to the same, um, rule, right? So how does that work?
We did take that into consideration and Jenny is eager to join us.
I, I see.
I think that she was about on the edge of her seat, so.
So you were right, the state does require that count twenty percent.
Right.
What this promotion retention refers to is actually the third through eighth grade. This is third graders, fifth graders and eighth graders have to be reading on grade level, uh, to be promoted and that fifth and eighth graders have to have a certain score on the math test.
Okay.
Um, so we still look at that, but it used to be that we couldn't promote a student to the next grade without having a placement meeting. Um, but what we know is that there are going to be a number of students that are behind and there's, the retest really takes place about two weeks after the results of the original test. And if a child's not reading on grade level, we've been working on that all year. There's nothing that's going to happen in two weeks. So why make a child sit through the test to get a prime? It's awful.
So really, it's just for third through eighth grade?
Why not? Didn't we, as a district cover problem anyhow with the milestone, because we called this the autopsy report? Is this not the same test?
It is. It is federally required that we.
It's required, but we didn't really put any stock in it because by.
Yes, ma'am, that, that is the autopsy report. You're, you're correct, but we have to have the legal ease.
We don't immediately get that child in where they need to be to really do, help them immediately.
Yes, we are working on that project.
So unlike them, why don't we just get rid of?
When we get finished with all this and we're able to make Barrow County the map testing capital of the state, will we be able to make that, um, milestone twenty percent thing go away for high schoolers then? Or what, what will that be? It'll be just a final at that point?
And so that is still a requirement that it have a great impact. And so it'll still be like, even if we, um, convince the state board to allow us to use this new map, G map test, um, they'll still make the final decision of how that impacts us.
But it'll be, it'll be a test that's created by our teachers, not by a state teacher that doesn't even know what has happened in our.
Right, the milestone is created by a company versus.
Right.
So we'll still have to hold our kids accountable for what they do in that milestone? Now that we know that the map, it'll still have to wait?
It'll be the new assessment, the map assessment will have an impact.
It's that of the milestone, so we won't have to do this.
And the map testing will be.
Our goal is to eliminate.
Local, good.
But the state wants it because it gives, it is an autopsy. They tell us six months down the road how children were doing for their record, basically. Doesn't help our kids.
Consent agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for explaining that, Jenny.
Mr. Pearl, you're back.
Material product failure, innovation theater, roof system, related to metal panels that are there. And so we're closer with the building contract. Material manufacturer, um, they offer settlement to replace the roof, roof, maybe the material manufacturer has. And so we're asking the superintendent to recommend accepting the terms of warranty by offering a tenth of the building products at a value of two hundred twenty nine thousand eight hundred seventy dollars to remove and replace the roof of the theater. Um, and then we're also asking to add ten percent on top of that contingency. Hopefully those are the funds that we did not have to use, but it was to account for the unforeseen condition that we, that we may encounter in this project.
Joe, I'm sorry, I was having a problem hearing you. So are they paying the total replacement cost on this?
They are.
Okay. Good enough. And do we know why they had an issue? Was it the manufacturer or?
It was the manufacturing process underway material. We searched on that, there were other projects in that same run, same batch of material that also had product fail.
So we wouldn't have any way to know this going into it. Have we usually spoke before?
We have.
And the, and we were okay with their products?
Yes.
Okay.
They did great in this process and there, there are different ways with this work that we go. They did very, very helpful.
What's their timeframe for replacement?
Well, we're hoping that we can get this done, uh, by the end of March, you know, that's when it has to kick off.
Right.
There's no stop after that. Can you hear to that? Do you have ability or labor and that sort of thing? That's, that's all.
Okay.
Can Ms. Stevens, I should clarify and say that that contingency, that's something that would be owner of the property that would come out of the pocket if, if we run into something that wouldn't be considered covered, uh, under the law. I don't know what that might be at this time, it's hard to say.
You can't add the contingency to them, to their agreement? Because things are going up. I mean, you know, materials cost more, everything costs more.
Right, they, they, uh, they're committed to and they bought the surprise of the chair, so we're not worried about escalation.
Okay, I just don't want us to get stuck with an extra fifty thousand dollars for something we, we had no control of.
But I mean, I don't think it's like the, the top of the guy, you know. I know that they specifically excluded was, um. was cleaning some of the tar off of the stage, but you're going, doing that right now, it's coming up. So we don't think it's an issue, but that, that tendency is that those of you who are being able to clean up or something that first that. And you include it.
Okay.
And it's, it's, you're asked about the company, companies, they go to the placement group. They have been great working and they helped push through this warranty made with campus. So the issue to the other one.
Right.
Not with the company. And you create that great deal, uh, did most of it last, and a great job.
Okay, so we're getting a new roof and it's being installed at, for two twenty nine eight seven.
Well, is it ten percent? I see down there where it says financial impact, two fifty two, eight fifty seven, is that right?
That's what we'll ask you all to, but we'll approve that from that there.
The two fifty two? Cause that's on B S, it's not on our, on our paper. I didn't get printed on here. I loaded on here.
Good. I know the guy who's selling you this roof, so if you have any problems. He said it's a major problem. So I've heard about it. Consent agenda? Okay.
Alright, uh, thank you. Our next item is a stated cost limitation for the balance of the elementary school. We're asking the superintendent to recommend a stated cost limitation of nineteen million, sixteen thousand dollars for the balance of the construction of the elementary school, motivation campus. Earlier this month, you all approved the roof and steel package building trade, eighteen dollars. So this particular request, financial impact, a nineteen, sixteen million dollars, we.
Not much you said, Rob, last. Right. Consent agenda? Okay.
This next item is a stated cost limitation for renovation of Bramble, Kennedy and Yargo. Super, we're asking the superintendent to recommend a stated cost limitation of four million, five hundred thousand dollars for renovation of Bramble, Kennedy and Yargo Elementary Schools. This is primarily the two-story buildings that those campuses, that also put some work, the single story, four-story building. So they are the, the projects earlier this summer. On this work. So that's, that's our recommendation there, stated cost limitation.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Alright, um, we're gonna take your session now. We'll discuss a waiver upon a permanent and permanent compensation, hiring disciplinary action dismissal, the periodic evaluation of reign of a public officer or employer to interview applicants for positions superintendent. We also will discuss or vote to authorize negotiations to purchase disposive or leased property, authorize ordering and appraisal related to the acquisition of disposive real estate. Enter into a contract to purchase disposive or leased property subject to approval on a subsequent public vote or enter into an option to purchase disposive or leased real estate subject to approval in a subsequent public vote. Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
No.
I was wondering what to do.
I've always wondered what would happen if somebody said.